...of Bartlett Board Meeting for September 6, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Erins, absent?
Yes.
Okay. Cammer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Dany?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We requested Chaplain Susan Pallay from the Jesus Journey Church to our invocation this evening. Pastor Pallay?
Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are near, as near as our next breath. We welcome you, as our righteous judge, to sit on your throne in the midst of us here and throughout the meeting. We thank you that when we call upon you, you not only hear us, but you answer us as well. Great wisdom and guidance is needed, not only in our personal lives, but for those civil servants who serve Bartlett. Father, you said you are the great I am, and we know that you are the great creator of all things. And when we ask for wisdom, you said in your word, the Bible, that you freely give it. You have given these leaders in this room a great responsibility, and they are willing to accept this responsibility and to call upon you for help. So we ask you, Father, not only to give them wisdom, but guidance, strength, and courage to make correct decisions in their personal lives and for the decisions made tonight that will affect the lives of every citizen in Bartlett. Father, I ask you to let each person know here that you are concerned for every person's life, as I encourage each one to draw close to you so they can discover who you are, as well as you showing them how much they mean to you. We pray that your will be done here, now, and always, for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Pallay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All items listed with an asterisk on the consent agenda will be considered enacted in one motion. There'll be no additional discussion on those items. Hearing that, does any board members wish to add anything to the consent this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add items 12A, 2, 3, and 4.
I would like to remove the bills list.
Anything else? Trustee Erins, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will undertake a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove the bills list, a separate item, and add the minutes from Board and Committee minutes, August 16, 2016. We'll add, under planning and zoning, item A, 2, 3, and 4, the BAPS On-Site Public Improvement Plan. And I will also include item C, 3, Brewster Creek Tiff Developer Note Number 3, Payout Number 37. The consent agenda will also include item D, 1, Under License and Ordinance Committee, the Potelac Amplifier Permit Request. It will also include, under the Public Works Committee, item F, 1, the Kent Circle Water Tower Painting Project.
Still moved?
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. This brings us to the bills list. I'll undertake a motion to approve the bills list.
Still moved?
Moved by trustee Carbonero, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Which brings us to the bills list. I'll undertake a motion to approve the bills list.
Still moved?
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few things for Mr. Dinges, which probably would be the best person to ask. Christopher Burke billed us for the potable water study twice for two amounts, $4,155 and $5,802. Could you elaborate a little bit about what they did?
What's the item number?
The question was on Christopher Burke water study. Those are invoices paid for the work they're doing for us with our Elgin negotiations, anything that's associated with that.
Just Elgin?
Well, and also any discussions we've had with Jawa or any other...
Have we had discussion with Jawa lately?
Yes, we have.
We have?
Yes, we have, and not only that, we're having some current discussions with DuPage again, who has asked that they have an opportunity to show us some numbers. So, since things aren't moving along as quickly as we had anticipated with Elgin, we decided that we would make sure that we're looking at all of our options again.
Who decided this?
We did.
Who's "we"?
The staff.
Staff decided?
Yes, we're still working...
Didn't the Board of Trustees direct staff to deal with 100% Elgin water?
Yes, and we have spent the last, close to a year with Elgin, trying to make sure that we got a contract for 100% Elgin. But given that languished timeframe, we decided it was appropriate just to make sure if we reached a point where we couldn't go any farther, that we had other options.
Do you think staff thought it was necessary to bring it to the Board of Trustees that we're exploring other options?
We're exploring the options that we had looked at in the first place.
I'm quite disturbed about this revelation. I just want to let you know that we're spending money on engineers to look at things that the Board of Trustees did not direct staff to do. And I am caught off guard a little bit. Also, Mr. Dinges, there's, I think, some more charges for water modeling. Could you elaborate a little bit about what that pertains to?
No, the water modeling is system water modeling for our entire village. Basically, that's needed no matter what option we choose, so we can determine which points in order to get the water, whether it's Elgin or 100% Elgin, we need to know where the mains are that need to be upgraded so that we can get the water across town.
Talk about which option we choose. Last I heard, that we chose Elgin as our option.
You're correct.
So, we're spending money on engineers without the village or trustees knowing about it.
Well, let's put some perspective on that. Burke is working probably 99% of his time with Elgin, trying to get a contract out of them relative to water. We had a call from Jawa that says, "We hear you're having a hard time. Will you look at our numbers?" That has not been any significant cost from the engineers, but I think a wise thing, in case this doesn't come through, we're able to pick up some negotiations.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. Am I missing something here? Isn't it the responsibility of staff to go out and gather information? And if that does cost money, it costs money, but then, once you have that information, then we would bring that before the trustees to make a decision. But I don't want to handcuff staff in gathering information.
I wouldn't feel handcuffed. I understand your comment, trustee Hopkins, and I acknowledge that.
Did you know about that, trustee Dany?
No, I didn't.
That they were...
But I didn't question it.
I didn't question it. I trust staff.
Anything else? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll to approve the bills list?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Erins?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have this evening, we have no treasurer's report. Next item we have is the president's report, and we have an award to hand out for the 125th Anniversary Logo Contest. So earlier this year, we announced the 125th Anniversary Logo Contest to help commemorate Bartlett's milestone birthday. And the winning logo was designed by 11-year-old resident, Marisha Telemack. I think Marisha is here. See?
Not 11-years-old. 11-year resident.
11-year resident.
You want my glasses?
The logo has been printed on the T-shirts and available for purchase through Arts in Bartlett and worn by volunteers at community events to celebrate the village's anniversary. Proceeds from the T-shirt and sales are being shared with Elgin-Bartlett, which helped judge the logo contest. So for your design win, I think we have a little something for you and some T-shirts for your family. Very nicely done. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So if you live here 11 more years, that would make you 22.
Next item we have this evening, questions? Anybody have any questions for the staff?
I do, I have a couple of questions. I'm a little bit concerned that we've kind of talked about raising sewer and water rates next year for 2017 and 2018. I know we haven't had a water rate increase in some times, so it's probably due, but we're also talking about building a $20 million police facility. I'm a little worried that a $20 million police facility and a water and sewer rate increase might be a big pill for some residents to swallow. So I would kind of like staff to put together some numbers to kind of see, as a whole, how much money are we really going to spend and how much is it really going to tax our residents?
Sure. We have most of those numbers on the police building, and we'll be coming up with some numbers relative to the utilities, and we can do that pretty quickly.
Yeah, that would be great. I know we looked at each thing individually, and I think individually...
Right.
They both merit being done, but if this cost is going to be a big burden, we might want to prioritize. Thank you.
Isn't this something that we'd be doing in the budget review anyway?
We would do this. We would do this, first of all, during our capital budget review, which will probably be in November, but I think trustee Hopkins is asking for an early heads-up on that, and we certainly can accomplish that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for those of you in the audience that would like to address the board. You can do so at this point. Please step up to the microphone, make sure it's on, and state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, if possible.
Comments regarding the TOD plan. My name is Almato Grano, a resident of Bartlett for over 30 years. Reside at 532 Hawthorne Avenue. My comments are limited to the Bartlett Shopping Center as presented by the downtown TOD plan final draft dated 6/13/2016. Item 1, favorable suggestions for Bartlett Plaza. 1, demolish the vacated grocery store. 2, re-landscape parking areas, and 3, modernize facade and signage. All good. Item 2, adding a north-south route. According to the TOD overview map, a road starts at Devon, goes through Bartlett Plaza, then through the apartments, ending at Railroad Avenue. For this route, apartment buildings will have to be demolished. We already have a north-south road from Devon to Railroad Avenue, just east of the Plaza, Berto Avenue. Item 3, relocating displaced Bartlett Plaza businesses and new commercial development. Question, what is the village willing to do in conjunction with landlords and developers? Item 4, proposing residential on the east side of Bartlett Plaza, when there are two buildings yet to be built at the Bartlett Town Center that are closer to the train station. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Seth Lewis, and I'm running to be your next state senator here in the 23rd District. I reside at 29W 571 Sunnydale Court in Bartlett, Illinois. It's an honor to stand in front of the village tonight. I do know most of you as well. The election is 63 days away. It's going to be a tough election, and I'm looking to represent my hometown, and if you could help get a hometown boy down to Springfield, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. He's got a W on his back. He's got extra time. He gets extra time.
Perfect, so we're Cub fans, then. That's good. My name is Mark Shapiro, 510 Ivory Lane in beautiful Bartlett. So I don't normally come to these things, so it's great to see this all set up. However, today I feel it's kind of important for me to be here. I've been living on Ivory for about three years now, have two young children, one six-month-old, one two-year-old, and I'm kind of concerned at kind of what I'm hearing about with the train noise off of Spalding Road. We've been playing this game now for three years. It's a long time. I feel when I was younger, kicking the can was fun, but I don't particularly like my local government doing that to me. And that's how I'm feeling right now. My six-month-old, I can't open her window at night. Trains, noises, all day long, all night long. I have neighbors with me today, same thing, same issues. Kids won't go outside to play in their backyards. Doesn't make sense to me. So last year, we came here, and to everybody here, I appreciate the village listened to us, we came up with a comprehensive plan we thought was fair to widen the road in Spalding. We knew we have the funding, right? We knew we had the funding for it, but we had to do some certain things. One of them was moving the driveway from the business across the road from me, which, by the way, I can see out of my backyard. That's how close I am to everything. And then I hear, hm, there seems to be an issue with that. So what that is telling me is saying, "We're okay with 80-s somewhat trains blaring their horns 24 hours a day, but we're worried about a couple tow trucks that might be coming through." It's not right, and it's not fair. It's not fair to my six-month-old, who can't sleep at night. It's not fair to my two-year-old, who can't go out and play in the backyard with his dog. That's not fair. So my expectation of you tonight is when we go up for a vote, I hear some yes votes, and if there is some no votes, I have to protect my children. I'll be more than happy to make some time to run against those no votes and to try to figure out how to get those no votes away. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to address the village, the board? Who's going to get there first?
Hi, my name's Sylvia Jesse. I live at 668 Biltmore Drive in Castle Creek, and I'm kind of on the opposite end. I've been living there for about 11 or 12 years since the community opened. My backyard faces both railroad tracks, so I hear the Metro and I hear the Canadian Railroad. Honestly, to me, it's not that big a deal. I raised twins there, their backyard or their bedroom faces the railroad tracks, and to me, the concern of having semi-trailers, it's not a couple of tow trucks, it's semi-trailers who have complete disregard for safety. One instance, there was a semi-trailer parked in the right turn lane on Lambert Lane, where he's not allowed to be. I informed him that he's not supposed to be parked there, and he told me, "F you, call the police." So this is the kind of trucking or truck drivers we're dealing with, and to have semi-trucks coming into Lambert Lane, where we have families with children, at least six buses, school buses, leave our community every morning, we're going to have to go by that entrance with the semi-trucks, it's an accident waiting to happen. And to me, I'd rather listen to a couple of horns that you get used to than have a semi-trailer, you know, hit a kid or a family. So to me, it's more important to deal with that business that's expanding too rapidly for its space, and maybe it's time for them to go, than, you know, because in the last year, it's gotten crazy, and it's only been in like the last year. So I don't know what happened with their business, if they tried expanding, and they did, and now they're kind of stuck, but it's just, it's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 569 Ivory, and our concern was the noise, and of course, number one is safety, and I truly am an advocate for safety. We want to make sure the right thing is done. I understand that it was a four-to-two vote, so it wasn't unanimous, so that's why things didn't move forward last time. I only have bits and pieces of information. I'm not a very strong political person, but I understand that it takes unanimous votes to do this. If the board looks at it from a safety perspective, absolutely, that is the first thing to, you know, take into consideration. Now, I don't know if they can widen, you know, Lambert and make it more safe. I don't know if they consider a stop sign. I don't know if a different direction can be, you know, brought in. I understand the concern of the aesthetics, and suggestion was, what if we put up trees so that people that are in Castle Creek, when they're looking out their backyard, then they don't have to see all the traffic going by? I understand that it's supposed to be where the truck drivers are supposed to come from the west end of Spalding and come around. So one of my friends, she and I discussed this the other day in person, and I, you know, hey, you know, this is an issue for us as community members, because we're on opposite sides right now, because, you know, they're concerned about the safety. We are too, believe me. Taking all that into consideration, at the time, we were just worried about the quiet, but indeed, we want our kids safe, we want safe areas. So that's number one. We're not going to dispute that anywhere. So we, you know, that is number one. We don't want to hear anything that there was any accidents. The only accident that I know of was person versus train downtown one time, as far as I know, and then that one semi that came through. That's downtown here. There are a lot of signs, there's a lot of warnings with the gates coming down, and this is a quiet zone in the front end of town here, but by us, because we do hear those 80 trains a day, you know, we hear the semis or the freight trains coming through. It's a lot, and yes, we do get used to it, but then there's times where it's like it just bellos between, excuse me, between our houses. So, you know, I could stand here all night and talk about this, but we all know that safety is number one, we do want it quiet, and are there any other options for us to consider and make everybody happy? Because we don't want war between the two communities, our kids go to school together, and this is Bartlett, it's a good town. We are a very good town, and we want to stay neutral, and we just asked for the quiet zone a while back, and then these issues were raised from Castle Creek, rightfully so, and we don't want to deny that of anybody, because we have kids that, you know, we want safe. So just please, number one, take safety into consideration and think slowly, but, you know, we would like it quiet, and I know that they would like it quiet too, but again, safety is number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, Allison Ozog, 568 Versailles Drive. I want to add that I have a unique perspective. I lived in Amber Grove, and I currently live in Castle Creek. I lived on the east side of Amber Grove, across from Naperville Road, so I heard all of the train noises at the intersection of Naperville and Spalding. Seeing the intersection now at Lambert and Spalding, I will definitely 100% say that is worse than train noise. I lived in Franklin Park, where the train was there all the time my life as well. The danger that is happening at Lambert and in the intersection of Spalding has increased. I went back to work, and now again, all the traffic is happening. So I have, again, all my pictures to show again. Another thing I want to add is that it is the number of the hours of operation that they are doing. Their signs are posted, it says from 8 o'clock, yet my pictures are posted at 6:40 in the morning. These trucks wait until the other truck can get out or until they open up the gates for them to open up for their normal business hours. They block the school buses, they block our entrance way for emergency vehicles to come in, and you may think it's a simple just back up, and they're in and out. It's not like a three-point turn for a car. This takes time, and it blocks everything up. I asked that the village to pursue the county to do their enforcements and not just say, "You called, and that's all you're going to do." The quiet zone has been lumped together with the Spalding improvements. It's a whole package idea, but the concerns of the safety of the Lambert and Spalding intersection has to be addressed, number one priority of our safety. Thank you.
I'll have to put this down because of my height. My name is Cecilia Morgan, and I live at 687 Biltmore Drive. I've lived in Bartlett for over 20-something years. We lived on the other side. I also am a teacher in the district, too. So safety is a concern of me, having children that grew up here, being a teacher in the district. Listening to the young lady that came up here about safety, it is very scary. I have retired, but I sub, so I do come down Lambert. Twice, I almost got hit. I'm a slow driver, so I come down really slow. There are trucks on this side, and there is trucks up here, and now you're trying to ease out, and as you ease out, you're looking to make the left-hand turn. You look left, you look right, and then there's another car coming this way. Well, you know what? There's a car right in front of you or in the side of you. It is very dangerous. Question I have is, the business is there, so we're going to have to deal with that situation. What are we going to do? I have heard, is that my three minutes?
I didn't reset it for you, so you're fine.
All right, I, thank you. I have heard that you were going to make the entrance in a different area, like on Lambert, and come in that way, am I right? Am I correct in what you wanted to change, the opening of where the trucks come into the business?
I have layout, but that is essentially correct. You want me to put that up there? I'll do that. Hold on a second.
Yes, it is up at Lambert.
A lot of slides here. We approved some of this, actually. This is the current layout, and I know it's hard to see, but the driveway right now is here. The trucks are coming in at this location. The proposed change in this agreement is to move the driveway up here on Lambert, install additional off-street parking, because that was the other concern of the resident or his customers. And the design of this, and let me just go a little further, since we're on this, allows the trucks to pull into the site and turn around on-site. So this...
Yeah, is that...
That's Lambert Lane...
Where they're coming up now.
This is the new entrance.
All right. Question is, are they going to be allowed like they are parked on those streets at any time? That street is very narrow. If you see, sometimes people park to go into the dog place.
Right.
And then you're coming down that street. You have to pull all the way over to the side to get around them. Now think, if they're allowed to park on that street, they're a truck. That's even bigger. So we'll even have a harder time trying to come down, and if there's an emergency vehicle trying to come up that street, and that truck is parked on the side, they will not be able to get by.
The last, and when we heard the concerns about the parking and the turning around, the staff went back and addressed it. That's why we've added more parking and allowed the vehicles, these trucks, to turn around on-site.
So they will be able to go into the lot? So nobody will be parked on Lambert at all?
We can pass an ordinance prohibiting trucks parked on Lambert or standing... We, we can pass an ordinance prohibiting trucks parked on Lambert or standing on Lambert from Spalding up to that drive.
Even the cars, there really shouldn't be any cars parked on because even coming down, those that live in Castle Creek, we have to pull all the way over to the side. There is a parking lot for people to do with their dogs, so they, but they don't. So there really should be an, for safety, an ordinance for them not to, is my Boston accent coming out? There really should be a safety-
Just for this particular area, the recommendation is an ordinance for signage.
Okay.
That says no vehicles can either park, wait, or stand.
So it will neither.
It eliminates all stopped vehicles, trucks, and cars simultaneously.
Can I ask a quick question?
How are we doing? I'm Jason Ehoff, 640 Versailles. The same concern that they're dealing with. My question is, first of all, where you guys are putting the driveway, correct? Who regulates that right there off Lambert? Is that Bartlett's? Is that the village of Bartlett?
The, the street is regulated by the village?
Yes.
Within our jurisdiction.
Correct. And the junkyard is owned by Elgin, correct? Can we look up on-
It's unincorporated.
If you actually look it up, if you Google it, it says it's in Elgin.
I think address wise, I think you're right, yeah.
Exactly, it has an Elgin address. So how are we, first of all, even starting to get into this, to why we're even putting a driveway there? If it's an Elgin address, how are we even getting involved in putting the driveway on Bartlett territory? I mean, how's, I don't even understand how this is even an issue right now. How are you guys even, why are we getting involved with Bartlett if it's an Elgin address? Shouldn't they handle their situation at hand?
I can respond to that.
I could respond as well, it's been a long time.
Originally, when this business occupied this property, which is in unincorporated Cook County, even though it has an Elgin address, it has the Cook County zoning for this business. The residents in the Castle Creek subdivision came to the staff and were concerned about all the trucks coming up and down Lambert Lane. We originally negotiated an agreement with this owner of Global Towing to have his trucks come in only from Spalding Road. I'm talking about his own vehicles, from, from Gert, from Gifford Road coming east into Spalding Road and entering his site here. So that was how we originally got involved with this. About two years ago, maybe two and a half, I, the one gentleman was more accurate with his timeframe, we had received some funding from the CN about making the CN Railroad quieter. We explored sound walls. Sound walls were not going to be effective. The residents in Castle Creek came to the staff and asked if we could get a quiet zone in this train.
Amber Grove.
Amber Grove, sorry. And asked about the quiet zone. We've been pursuing the quiet zone in order to get the quiet zone. And it's not a simple answer, there's lots of agencies involved in it. But essentially, the design of the quiet zone is here and this, these black lines are actually barriers in the road. And Mr. Global Towing's driveway is here. It has to be relocated to get it out of the Metro right-of-way and a lot, and out of this air, quiet zone area. Because this is, there's no crossing of the street. So in order to do that, the solution was to move his driveway up here and then add parking. And recently, the off-site maneuvering of the truck, which I showed with the animation, was a result of the residents coming two meetings ago, I believe. So there was a truck turning movements, which are now onsite, and the parking, which is congesting this intersection. That coupled with what the chief just told you about our future, about an ordinance to prevent the stopping, standing, parking, is trying to address the Castle Creek residents' concerns about Global. So it's a lot of things that came together. It isn't that we're just, we don't want to deal with the business in Elgin, it's just unincorporated Cook County. And we've been dealing with them to try to satisfy some of the residents' concerns about truck traffic, noise, and safety.
So, and then now in Naperville, which is still in Bartlett, Naperville Road, what negotiations were done? Because that's a quiet zone, it's right on the sign right there. No horn zone or whatever right there, so I mean-
Quiet zones are negotiated on an individual basis with the Federal Railroad Administration, Metra, and the ICC. And they have to analyze each individual intersection of the railroad crossing and traffic. And we've produced some of them. Paul has worked on those more than I have, so it's a long process.
I think we've given it up enough as a, as a community. I mean, you got Estes, the new truck came up there. I mean, thank God, it's more towards Lake Street. But now you're talking about putting a driveway right by the subdivision, but they keep talking about safety. And the trucks that come out in it at Estes and all that, really not to have kids over there. You're talking about putting the driveway right in the bike path, you know, right across from the homes now. So I mean, talking about way bigger issue that you want to deal with. And it's like the woman said before, you know, about safety, that's the first things first, you know, I mean, the other two trucks ones that are there right now, they're there. I mean, let's just keep, you know, devaluing our subdivision. At one point, we gotta make a stop on here and say, "Enough's enough." I mean, this is right by the park now, you know, the two other truck stops, they're up front, more closer to Lake Street, and there's no one probably sending their kids out on Lake Street. But, I mean, they're putting this right in the middle of a bike path now. I mean, it's right on the bike path, you know.
Thank you for your comments.
This is the only other location that can access his site. There is no other location on Spalding that can-
I understand. Once again, to what I first talked about is why we're hampering to Elgin where the city of Bartlett.
Hello, my name is Terrence. I'm from 672 Biltmore Drive, Bartlett.
Repeat your name, please.
Terrence, Terrence Dundee.
Terrence.
Okay. A few years back, actually, our president's dog died on Lambert by a truck. And that's when she was on a case to kind of get that board on place, saying no trucks through that. She was, I, I knew all the paperwork she was doing. And finally, we got that board saying no trucks on Lambert. We still see a lot of trucks going through. Yes, the traffic has reduced the amount of trucks we get, but we do still see a lot of trucks going though, even though there's a board. I know you're talking about an ordinance putting it there, but it's not enforced strictly. We already have a, a trucking company there, which we tried to stop. Nothing happened. It's already, in the beginning of Lambert, there's a trucking company on 20. So it's built, there's trucks already there. By having this new one, which is right next to the dog park, is going to be a huge safety concern for the pets, for the kids, just, if you go down in the evening, there's kids on bikes, rollerblades, right by the dog park. So it's going to be a huge safety concern. Even now, when I take my kids to the park, I'm always worried about cars going through. So by more truck traffic, yes, you can put any kind of boards, but these are truckers. I had a trucker who was next door to me. His dog was pooping in my yard and I couldn't say anything because he was like, "Do what you want to do." They have an attitude. I mean, I'm not trying to discriminate or kind of profile people, but if you deal with them, they have an attitude. We cannot deal with them on a regular basis. We have jobs to do, I'm not going to go fight with people. So my question is, with all this happening, safety is my huge concern. Yes, noise is a concern. I'm not saying I'm against noise, but safety is a concern for my kids and people there.
Thank you, Terrence.
Hello, my name's Janine Strama. I have a very unique perspective on the area. I didn't grow up in Bartlett, I've lived here about twenty years now.
Address?
621 Versailles. Sorry about that. I've been at the Versailles address for about ten years. Before that, I was in Bartlett and other address for about ten years. My father actually owned the business across the street from Global. Gosh, thirty-five, forty years ago? He owned it for about twenty years. So I remember when you moved Rose Lane. The trains have always been there. I'm not discouraging, I'm not taking away that they're noisy, but they have been there forever. We all bought our homes and moved there knowing the trains were there. My concern, as well as the other Castle Creek residents, is about the safety. My daughter rides the bus at 6:30 in the morning, has to wait because there is a truck blocking Spalding Road. Bad enough the kids on the bus at 6:30 in the morning to begin with, but then to sit and wait there. So my concern is, when that happens and they're blocking Lambert, it's a lot more traffic that goes through Lambert than goes down Spalding towards Gifford. Emergency vehicles come through there. Trucks are parked. I know there's no truck parking signs everywhere. I know there's no truck traffic signs everywhere. The trucks sit in front of the sign. You'll see that from the pictures. They don't care. Who is going to clean up the mess that is left on the roads from these trucks? When I get a flat tire from running over junk left on Lambert Lane, who is going to take care of that? Who is going to help me fix my car so I can get to work? It just, it's, it's a safety concern for the kids. There's tons of kids, they're all up and down there. I walk myself and have to wait for the trucks. I've almost gotten hit a few times. I've been driving down Spalding Road and had a truck stop in front of me quickly, leaving me on the railroad tracks, honking my horn. I just get this out the window, I honk again and I get another gesture. So I have to put my car in reverse and wait till they leave, otherwise I'm left sitting on railroad tracks. They don't care about signs, they don't care about the residents. I knew what I was in for at that intersection with Spalding. And I always thought, if I see a truck there, I'll just go the other way out to Naperville Road and I had a way to get around it. But if you're blocking my entrance on Lambert, I don't have a way to get out unless I go all the way up to Lake Street. I understand that the trucking companies at the front of our subdivision are Elgin and it's, it's not within your jurisdiction. This is within your jurisdiction. If this is unincorporated Cook County with an Elgin address, why are we giving them land? And if we are giving them land, will there be taxes paid on it? Will the gentleman that owns this company have to pay Bartlett taxes on this land? And who is paying to put in this parking lot? Is he paying for it or am I, as a Bartlett resident, going to be paying with it with tax dollars?
CN is, actually.
They're paying for the entire thing.
Million dollars, yeah.
And if it goes over a million dollars, will they cover that? If it goes over a million dollars? And will there be taxes paid on this property that he is inheriting?
That he's buying, yes.
We'll be paying taxes on it.
When he disconnects.
Maybe that can go to pay for my flat tires. Because I hope it's just a flat tire. I hope it's nothing serious. I've unfortunately seen a lot of emergency vehicles come into our, into our subdivision. And that is the direct access into the subdivision. So I would hope that you'd reconsider this. And I'm telling you, that new design, while I wasn't here last time to see the old design and it looks a little better, if you have cars in that parking lot and if those cars are parked the way that they're parked all up and down Spalding, a truck is never going to be able to pull in and do that maneuver. Absolutely not. They're going to pull in halfway and start unloading right there. Or they're going to pull in down Lambert, back in, leaving their front out, leaving us one narrow lane to get by. It's a crowded road, there's a lot of people that use that road. So I hope you'd consider redesigning this and coming up with another solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Strama, 621 Versailles Drive, Bartlett. I want to thank everybody for the redesign. I know that we had a lot of conversation after the last meeting on this and I appreciate you taking the time the last time. As far as, as far as the new design is concerned, a little bit, I think it's getting closer to where it needs to be. But I have to be quite frank with you, is that with the number of trucks that are waiting and these are not, these are not just tow trucks, I just want to make that clear, they're not flatbeds towing a single car where that they're going to pull in and drop off. As we kind of talked about before was, is that the problem is that there's no pull-through, there's no ability for them to pull in and come directly through. Which I understand that it's been widened, looking at it, and I appreciate the animation, I think that was actually great. But with the width of Lambert and the fact that if you actually do have customers that are parking in that, in those spots, and you have two trucks at minimum, most mornings when, when I'm leaving at 6:30, I drop my daughter off at the bus and I drive right past her, there's at least two trucks that are waiting to pull in. If you have two or three trucks, they're not going to be blocking that parking lot. And, and I understand that you guys have kind of done a redesign and it, and it's getting closer, I think, to something that's probably achievable. But there really needs to be some way to try to look at, how do you make this a pull-through so that you don't have trucks now blocking in the cars that are in the parking lot? Cars that, there are trucks that have to be able to back in and wait for another truck? Because where is that, where's that second or third truck going to wait while that one is, you know, backing in or is pulling in and then backing in and waiting to pull out? And the question is, the driveway width, is that assuming that one of those trucks is trying to wait or backs in, loads up and then tries to pull out, is the driveway, driveway width wide enough that a car can pass by that if a customer or an employee has to drive past it or another truck could get by in that entrance? So, you know, I appreciate all the work that's being done and I think that there's some progress being made on this. But I still think that there's probably more, a little bit more that could be done. And especially knowing that you have a million dollars to spend on this, there's probably something really exciting that you might be able to put together for this. And, you know, in addressing that one issue is if there's some way that you could figure out how to get a pull-through in there so that those trucks are coming straight through and they're not backing up, they're not pulling forward, they're not blocking an entrance, they're not doing any of that, that's probably going to be the best bet, especially when there's multiple trucks that are waiting. So, thank you.
Hey, Bob.
Just throw this up, there, there is a wider driveway area and maybe, Dan, you could explain that. This one shows it a little more detail.
Yeah, you can see across from the parking where it bumps out, there's actually, that's fifty-six feet of pavement. We're talking about a lot of pavement. The parking stalls themselves are head-in. Those parking stalls are about eighteen feet, is a typical vehicle. So you're talking about thirty-eight feet of pavement from the end of where a car would be parking to the north end, which gives ample space for a truck to be able to maneuver within that area and then be able to back into Global and then be able to pull out onto Lambert. So there should be no backing out onto Lambert, no parking on Lambert. There actually, they would actually have room to have, if there is a second truck, they would actually be able to park in that bump out, bump out area and still allow the customers to, to maneuver into their, into and out of their parking areas. Because a typical drive aisle for a parking lot is twenty-four feet. So there's an additional eighteen feet beyond that where a truck would be able to park. So there is room for a truck to stage there, but we've actually talked to Global and told him, "We don't want their trucks here, we want them west of the tracks, west on Spalding, we don't care where they're at. They can call and when the truck gets done unloading, loading, then they can signal and have the other truck come in." So we're actually telling them, "Keep the trucks west of the crossing into, you know, west on Spalding."
Actually, they've been parking in the Metro. They're, they pull up at the Metro lot and they're using that as a turnaround, they're blocking the road a little bit.
On the north side of Spalding?
Yeah, just on the other side of the tracks.
That'll actually be blocked off as well. So they won't be able to do that.
Because right now, that's what they're, they're partially using that as a turnaround for some of it, but that's a little difficult because the, you know, how bad the road and tracks and when they go through there, it's a little rough because we've seen it in the mornings. But they're, like I said, the concern is, is that with the, when you take a look at Lambert and look how narrow it is, with the cars passing, you've got the truck that's, that's pulling in, if there's not room, and again, like I said last week, this isn't, I get the, I get the train, the noise from the trains, everything was, you know, these were, those were all there when we moved in and we're trying to make a quiet zone. But at the same point, we're also trying to make this safe. And it's just the, the amount of backing up and pulling forward and blocking the road that goes on, that it just, it seems to make sense. And like I said, I appreciate what you've done, it just seems that there's, if there was some type of pull-through that could be put in, there's where they just come straight in, they get loaded up and they pull out the other side and they're done. And not, that way it leaves room for trucks to line up, to pull right through and be done when they're lining up. Because I don't, sometimes there's three trucks. Usually, I've never seen more than three waiting, but, you know, it's where they're all going to go.
I don't disagree that a pull-through would be good. The problem is, when we get the barrier median down on Spalding, we can't get the trucks to be able to maneuver and make that- and make that turn and be able to get across the tracks. We would love to be able to do that, but just with, with being able to accommodate a semi, you can't just make that turn. So we think we've come up with a solution that keeps the trucks and the traffic away from the crossing, which I know the railroad and that is very interested in. It moves it slightly to the north, yes. But it keeps the trucks and their backing out, maneuvering, all off of Lambert in this parking area and in the Global site. So we think it's a, it's a good solution. And we, we believe that it can work.
And the only other thing I would ask is I know you guys mentioned ordinances and some other things to keep the trucks off the road, but, you know, that you act whatever you can. Because right now, I'm not saying it's Global's problem because everybody does it. There's still a lot of trucks that cut through on Lambert. So we, moving the entrances, I'm sure going to open that up to just all that many more vehicles using it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strama. You're only allowed one turn.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
It's me again. Okay. Obviously, safety is number one. We all agree that there is no question whatsoever. This has to be done safely. Just a question, if that one page, the more, the live screen is up, yeah. The other one that had the houses. Not, no, I'm sorry. I meant like the bird's eye view, the bird's eye view. There you go. So where, on the left bottom-hand side, where it says 100-foot barrier median, is above, where the yellow is there, is there any way that would they consider driving in from that way? And not using Lambert, but pulling from the more west end of Spalding? And try and set up some type of a driveway that way? But I understand that, you know, where, this way here, that's another set of tracks, right? That's Canadian going up and down here? Right. And how about this one going by the O, by the Unicorp? Nope. Go to the left. Left, left. Keep going. And they're up and down. What, is that the other railroad tracks? Is that Canadian National? Okay. Well, where the word barrier says in the yellow, is there any way we can get them to have a driveway that way? Just a suggestion, just a thought of, hey, let's forget about Lambert Road. Let's keep them on that side and keep, keep all the trucks going in. It's just, just an idea. Yeah. Uh huh. Well, he crosses over the tracks and then he turns left right there. But he, can he turn left before that? Okay. 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 And then my other thought behind this was, can we just ask Metra just to cool it? Have little toots instead of long blasts? Because the one day, and I kid you not, 22 seconds on just one horn, because it's supposed to be long, long, short, long. And one of them was 22 seconds. Now, there could have been something in the way, an animal, maybe a car, fine, I get that. But maybe they can, you know, because the one guy in the middle of the night, he quieted down, but another guy, he'll do little toots. And it's like, oh, wow, that's awesome. He's got a heart. So maybe Metra can be like, you know, maybe we can ask them to say, "Can you change your attitude on the horn?" And just be a little softer about it. At least in the interim, that might help us, you know, make us happy, but still, you know, you know, try and do whatever we can safely to get it quiet. But, you know, it's worth a shot asking them. We're only people asking people to, you know.
We can ask.
We did that some years ago, I have to tell you. Before we had the quiet zone downtown, and there's a lot of residential close to the track, and we could always try again, but they told us for security purposes, it is up to the conductor how, how much he or she thinks they need to whistle to make things safe, and they weren't going to start dictating that. So it doesn't hurt to ask again.
It doesn't hurt to ask. You know, and that's why we're all here, just to ask.
Sure.
Well, the mayor of Hannibal Park is on the board at Metra, so we can ask him.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yep.
I'm done now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Krishna Kalagara, 637 Versailles Drive from the Castle Creek. So I'm up here along with all my neighbors to express our concern about moving the driveway. And sir, if you could back up to the slide that has the driveway and the parking slots there. Yep. Yeah, this one. So this one shows up, as the gentleman was explaining, there's like 56 foot and then the 18-foot slot. So that still leaves 36 or something. Is this, in addition to the, from the existing, the wooden wall or fence, is it a new? Okay, and. Okay. So one thing I'm going to question is, we are talking about enforcing, putting up signs, enforcing the laws there. What is being done today to enforce the parking signs of the parking, parking across the street, parking up by the Spalding-Lambert intersection on the opposite direction of the driving? And I have seen many times, I have pictures, Mrs. Allison have pictures that's been shared, and we've been sharing those pictures last three times, and she's been getting pictures even after the last three board meetings, which is like one and a half month now, and we still see pictures. And, I mean, I don't want to here point out anyone. I have seen a police officer just driving by, a patrol officer, even though a truck was parked on the other side of the street, opposite the traffic, blocking, completely blocking the intersection. I mean, it's, I'm not trying to point anyone. Probably nobody complained about it, so the officer wasn't trying to talk to the driver. The driver wasn't trying to pull in or pull out. It was just parked there. I saw an officer. I have a picture. I don't have the, I mean, the picture of the officer, but I have the picture of the truck parked right there on July 22nd. So, I mean, how can we get assurance that these, whatever enforcement we are talking about will be enforced when it's not being enforced today? That, that's a safety concern, and that the Lambert, the width of Lambert Lane is not enough, I mean, not wide enough. We have these trucks go inside, as my neighbor has been just explaining about it, and more, one or two trucks are waiting. That doesn't give enough space, and this business has a sign that says, "No parking for customers inside." I don't know how, as you said, like 10 years back or so many years back when this business was started, how this was allowed to have a business without a parking inside, and now we are talking about putting up new parking. But I think I'm running out of my time, but we express our concern about safety.
Chief, do you want to address the parking?
Yeah, it's a, when we do send officers out, and we do on a regular basis, it's amazing how fast they clean the place up. That being said, I'm hearing a lot, and I'm taking a lot of notes, that it's actually going on very early. We've been, and I will re-initiate traffic enforcement out there earlier. To be completely honest, zero tolerance policing is sometimes useful in this environment at this stage. I'm not sure that that would fit. We're working with them, or we're working with the owner, we're working with the truck drivers. Why we're in the middle of this very contentious environment of trying to work this out what's best for everybody. Eventually, a decision will be made, and then the police will be very comfortable taking the gloves off and making this place pretty pristine. We're, right now, we're in the middle of this netter world, where we're trying to do our best by working with them individually and answering individual complaints, and I'm sending a trafficking unit out there. I can be honest with you, when I send marked units out there, things clean up real quick. When I, we're now moving into a stage of sending unmarked covert vehicles out there to record so we can bring it to the board and do an educational, what's exactly going on. I'm comfortable that where this is in a month, either way or two, after decisions are made, the police will be more comfortable getting more proactive on behalf of this community, which we have been doing for years. That being said, right now, it's, it's an interesting time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Aubrey Moore, and I've actually lived.
Um, what's your name?
Aubrey Moore.
Aubrey.
I live at 509 Ivory Lane, and I am here to answer everybody's question. Can you pull up the bird's eye view, please? So houses on the right-hand side, on the second house off the corner. And I could show you pictures where the Global employees park in front of my house every single day. They leave their cars parked overnight. I have to ask them to move every single day for months now. They're parking on Spalding, clogging up that lane, just like everyone said about the trucks. When I go up Gifford to go to my son's school in South Elgin, there's many times those trucks, they don't care. They don't care. And they're parking all up and down Spalding, just like the other lady said, you have to like inch out because there's cars parked here, there's cars on both sides, you inch out. And many times, I've called the police department because my son catches the Kenyon Woods bus on Rose Lane. Those cars come flying down Spalding like there's no tomorrow. So they're parking in our neighborhoods, they're parking all up and down the street. It's very dangerous. Somebody really needs to be policing the company, I think.
Thank you, Aubrey.
I guess I've heard both sides of the story. I understand the train noise. I mean, it's bothersome, but you can, you know, you can get used to it, like everyone's saying, but I really don't think we should jeopardize and just give away property as Bartlett as a community. I mean, if you guys, I mean, give me land if you want to give it to anyone else in this crowd, I'm sure. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. You have all these people coming up and complaining about safety issues. We're just going to give unincorporated Elgin, like I said, when you look it up, it says Elgin in there. We're just going to give them land to put a driveway on, which is a safety concern for, you know, several neighborhoods around it. It just doesn't make sense to me as a village. So why are we going, why are we going to give them that, that land, that property, you know, to benefit them? I mean, unfortunately, the only thing that would make sense is somewhere, and let's not hope that someone's getting something, you know, under the table would be the only thing here. I mean.
They're paying for the land, actually.
They are buying the land, if you.
I mean, it's, it's our, I mean, it's part of Bartlett, so why are we just going to let them come in and open a driveway over there? You know, by our subdivision where there's kids, the safety concerns, why are we going to?
Sir, are you repeating everything you said the first?
Yeah, I know. I'm just kind of.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Dorothy Dino. I'm a music teacher here in Arts in Bartlett. I've been here about 12 years. I reside at 1605 Spalding in Amber Grove. And, yeah, the noise, I don't think you really get used to it because I have kind of off hours, so during the day, you notice a lot. You notice it in the middle of the night. It wakes you up, especially the really heavy freight trains. But I think if we can talk about, someone mentioned that, you know, they, that the hours of the company, the towing company are really posted at eight. If we can really address how early they actually are beginning their business hours, and especially when it comes to school buses and things like that, I think that that's an important point to reiterate that it's 6 o'clock, they're on their, they're on the loudspeaker, talking too, really loudly. If I can hear it three, four blocks away, it's just too early, 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. I mean, if we can limit that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Dorothy.
My name is Michelle Bach. I actually live at 1006 Biltmore Drive in Elgin. I am the Castle Creek side. I'm an Elgin resident. I know I don't live in Bartlett. I wish I did. I was sold. I thought I was buying in Bartlett when I sold my house. But I'm here because I consider myself part of Castle Creek. We're one. I'd like to be annexed into Bartlett. That's another conversation. But I'm just here to support our neighbors and say, "This is a safety issue." Now, I live on the east side, or actually, the, the north side of Lambert, right at our intersection right now. Unlike my neighbor here was saying, there's, there's no children up by the truck companies. We've already been negatively impacted by the brand-new trucking company going up behind Estes. It is right actually at our residential street. So my neighbor here lives on the corner where he's going to have trucks pulling out right next to his house. So we're already, we're bookended, our neighborhood, where we paid $500,000 for these houses in 2005. We have two trucking companies now, and now you're looking to bookend us with another, a junkyard. So it's not doing any of our Castle Creek residents any favors. We can't even sell our houses for $100,000 less than what we paid for them. So just if you can think about the value in addition to our safety. As you know, there's a dog park there, there's our, our children's park that we all go to. It is also, the driveway will cross a bike path area. So if you're looking, and on the right-hand side of Lambert, that's a sidewalk that goes up along the pond. But on the left-hand side, it's a wider path that all our Amber Grove, Castle Creek, everybody rides their bikes there. So our bike path will be going right across that driveway as well. I also would like to say, and I think this has been brought up at previous meetings, that there really should be a stop sign if you went, if you went further up on Lambert at Thornberry, where Thornberry and Lambert meet. It's a curve, and these trucks are flying through, even though there's not supposed to be trucks going that way. So at least let's get a stop sign in there too, in addition to everything else that's going on. Thank you for hearing me out, and.
Thank you, Michelle. That, I believe, concludes our town hall portion of the meeting this evening. Thank you all for your input. Next item we have this evening is Understanding Committee reports under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. The first is the Meridian Court rear yard variation. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pucinski.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. I have put up on the screen the proposed variation. Staff has requested that this 1512 Meridian Court variation go directly to the board for final vote. If it's approved, to expedite this gentleman's ability to construct his addition. He's asking for a variation from the rear yard setback for a new addition onto his existing home. This went to the Zoning Board of Appeals earlier in July, and they recommended approval. The addition will essentially be a room with a nice fireplace and just coming out the back. Obviously, you can see the proposed view from the rear of the house. It's a pretty straightforward rear yard setback variation, some that, others that have been granted similar to this in the village. And if there are any questions, I will try to answer them. I don't know if the gentleman is here. I haven't seen him. But that's the sum and substance of it.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Very well. I move to approve ordinance 2016 dash.
68.
68, an ordinance granting a rear yard variation for 1512 Meridian Court. It's removed. Second.
I did make a motion. Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Dany. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Kimmer?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The second item on planning and zoning this evening is the transit-oriented development or TOD plan. We're looking for a formal resolution this evening. Jim, if you want to give us a few comments.
This, again, is the TOD plan that has gone through the full analysis by the planning consultants as a result of our application to the RTA for a grant. The village received the grant, it went through with SCV was our main consultant, Fish Transportation, Goodwin Williams Group on the economic development end of it. This resolution approves this as a, as a policy and guide for the development, future development of the downtown. Just some of the goals and, and objectives of the plan. At your committee meeting, you asked questions, they answered them and recommended that, and the committee recommended this be forward to approval. That's a result of about a year-plus work and numerous public meetings and public hearings.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to table.
Well, procedurally, why don't I move to approve? That's how that would work. Okay. So I move to approve resolution 2016 dash.
72.
72, approving the downtown transit-oriented development plan.
And I would move to table.
Is there a second? There's a second. Is there a second for the TOD resolution?
I'll second it if we have to move this along.
All right. It's been proposed, motion by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Dany.
No, before, there's a roll call now.
Yeah, is there any discussion?
Before that, now.
Yes, I moved, I moved to table this.
But that needs a second.
Further discussion at a later date.
Trustee Kimmer has made a motion. Trustee Cammer has made a motion to table this item for additional discussions to be had before we make a vote on the TOD plan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to table the, the downtown TOD plan adoption and by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Dany. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Two-thirds?
No, it's just a simple majority.
Okay. The motion carries.
So then, moving forward, since the matter's tabled, when is it coming back up?
Next committee?
Um, I'd like it to be further out than that. I'd like there to be allowed for more discussion, especially for the, uh, small business owners of the Bartlett Plaza community.
Well, if it was tabled under Robert's rules, it has to come up the next meeting. If we wanted to table it to a date certain, we should have done that. So what's, I mean, obviously, we want to give the residents opportunity, additional opportunity to, to make comment, but at the same time, the, the motion to table is not open-ended.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have in mind when you would like it to be?
Um, should, I think a reasonable amount would probably be...
First meeting in October?
First meeting in October and a month, a month from now. Thirty days.
Designate that.
You could, um, move to amend your motion to table, to table it until October 4th.
Is that the first meeting?
2016, yes.
All right, can I amend the motion?
You can make that motion, but then that requires a second. So you're moving to amend your motion to table to a date certain?
Technicalities.
Uh, sure.
October 4th.
I'll ma, I'll make a motion to amend my, uh, motion to table till October 4th.
I will second that.
Made a motion, uh, Trustee Cammer's motion to table the TOD discussion to the October Committee of the Whole meeting. Um, Committee of the Whole, are we going to vote at that?
I think you're going back to board if you're tabling it.
On the October 4th meeting, seconded by Trustee Dany.
Well, my question is, is that give staff enough time to put something together so people have the opportunity to, to meet and talk?
The plan is, isn't, I mean, anybody can ask questions about the plan, we'll be glad to answer them. I don't know what they're looking for other than what's in it.
Okay.
But if we put it back to the board level, it doesn't give that opportunity for the discussion with the small business people.
Okay.
So I think if you're going to do that, it should go back to committee.
I agree.
All right.
So it'll come back to committee, and that it'll come on 10-18?
Okay.
Is that what we're saying? Back to the board?
And so the people in the audience that are concerned about it, that you understand then that you'll be, you'll have an opportunity to come address us, just like, like everybody did tonight at that October board meeting?
October 4th.
Okay. And then at, at some future date, the board will vote on it?
Correct.
Maybe the second October?
Yep.
Okay.
So, to do this, but if you want to amend it to make the, it's tabled until, uh, October 18th.
All right. I'd like to move, I'd like to move to change the, uh, the motion to be, to amend it to October 18th. Table, tabling of the motion. Now you got me confused, Brian. Um, I'd like to make a motion to table the Transit Oriented Development Plan until October 18th.
Well, I've seconded twice, so is this a third now?
Trustee Cammer has made a motion to table...
Third time's the charm.
TOD plan to, um, the October 18th meeting, is that what it is?
It's October 4th committee, right?
October 4th committee and October 18th board meeting. And seconded by Trustee Dany, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Dany?
Yes.
The motion carries. So our item resolution to downtown TOD plan has been tabled.
To the October 18th meeting?
Are we sure?
Uh, some of us. Okay, Mr. President, that's all we have for planning and zoning.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Uh, next item we have this evening for Committee of the Whole, our, our standing committee reports is the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have in our Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Dany.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of items on the agenda this evening. The first one is Part A. It's a Brewster, well, the first one is Brewster Creek Business Park, TIF District Refinancing, Part A, is the ordinance providing the issuance not to exceed $9,500,000 senior lien tax increment revenue bond series 2016 Bartlett Quarry Redevelopment Project of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, and providing for the execution of a trust indenture and a bond order in conne, in connection here with. And I would like staff, if they could, to give us...
That's a motion, did you, is that a motion to approve that?
All right, then, we're not going to ask, yeah, I'm looking. That's a motion to approve that.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
Do you have a question of staff?
I can't hear you.
Do you have a question of staff?
No, 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 I didn't. I thought, I was going to ask staff to explain specifically what that was to the trustees.
Brian, why don't you take this one?
I'm sorry?
I asked Brian, I thought it would be appropriate for him to review this with you.
Essentially, um, this is an ordinance to allow Love City to refinance some of their existing debt. And the first portion is issuing not to exceed $9.5 million of tax increment revenue bonds. Overall, um, what's out there now is primarily built in DuPage County. And, uh, if this refinancing were not approved, there's a second ordinance that goes with it, the development as you see it would stop where it's at now. This will allow them to continue by reissuing bonds and also notes. And with the savings in the lower interest rate, they can reinvest some money and do some work to finish up the DuPage County portion of the TIF, and then do some work in the Cook County portion as well. There was a minor change in the budget consistent with the statute that allows for, um, the original amount was $30 million, but there's a provision in the TIF Act that allows it to increase by 5% plus inflation. That number was increased to 44 million to allow them to do this work. There's no cost to the village. There's no, um, these are paid out of TIF revenues, and there's no obligation on the part of their nonrecourse against the village. So, um, that essentially are, are, is what these two ordinances accomplish. Uh, the rest is very technical in terms of investments, allowing the bankers and investors to purchase bonds and, uh, they're tax exempt, and so there's arbitrage requirements and other things that are in, uh, any bond ordinance. So I don't want to get into the technicalities of the ordinance itself, but that's essentially it.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I'm sorry, go ahead, Tiel.
What's the risk to the village?
None. You know, very, very many.
The words I've honored to hear.
So with that, I'm, uh, motioning to approve ordinance...
Hearing made a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
And a second. So anybody have any other questions about it? Information? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Just for the record, it's our ordinance 2016 dash 73.
Seven-three.
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion carries, sorry.
Next one is the, uh, next item is the, in fact, I'll make a motion now to approve ordinance, uh, 2016 at 74, correct?
Yes.
An ordinance with the, uh, of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, providing for the issuance of not to exceed $11,500,000 subordinate lien tax increment revenue note series 2016 Bartlett Quarry Redevelopment Project, and pledging certain incremental property tax revenues to the payment thereof.
Second. Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Final item, while we actually had the Brewster Creek TIF Developer Note Number Three payout, number 37 was covered under consent agenda, so the last item we have on our agenda is the contract to purchase Oak Street vacant lots, and...
Can I make a motion?
All right, unless we want to have some discussion from staff on specifically what they were. So I, I'll make a motion. I move to, uh, passage of resolution 2016. What's the number, Lorna?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, a resolution approving the contract to purchase vacant land between the Village of Bartlett and David Kruger as presented.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
No.
We discussed this, we handled it before, I think. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Uh, yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
The motion. Did that sit for you, Mr. Trustee Dany?
That's correct, Mr. President, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have in our standing committee reports this evening is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaron's.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had one item covered under the county agenda, and that would be it for us.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item we have in our, our standing committee reports is the Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing on the agenda for the season.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, on standing committee reports this evening, we have under Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two things under the, uh, Public Works Committee this evening. One of them went to consent agenda with the Kent Circle Water Tower painting project, and the second one is the quiet zone for Eagle Z and Global reconsideration. Uh, with that being said, and with the residents here involved, I'll, I'll redirect this to the, uh, our attorney for a recap, so that we're all clear about what's going on.
I'm just going to go, uh, talk about the procedural issue. Um, so at the last meeting, there was, well, let me take this step back. Several meetings ago, there was a resolution that approved of an agreement that passed by a vote of six to zero. There was a concern that there should be more off-screen parking added, so the agreement was modified to add additional parking spaces at the expense of Global. And that was to be approved by an ordinance. Part of the underlying agreement includes the sale of .54 acres of land over which Global already has an easement at its appraised value. And because that agreement involves several components, uh, the least common denominator were that portion that dealt with the sale of land, uh, and the agreement approved by an ordinance requires, uh, the approval of three-fourths of the corporate authorities. And that, um, ordinance appeared to have passed four trustees in favor and two trustees against. The two who voted against it, trustee, um, Ranky and trustee Hopkins, uh, voted on the prevailing side. So to pass the ordinance, it will require reconsideration first. That motion to reconsider would have to be brought by either trustee Ranky or trustee Hopkins. And then if that passes, the underlying ordinance could be voted on again. So, um, there's been an hour of discussion on the, the drives, and there was a demonstration of how the, you know, trucks would get in and out, so I'll, I will labor at those points.
Uh, I moved reconsider ordinance 2016 dash 65.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee, um, Dany. Is there any discussion?
I have a question at this point in time. We're reconsidering this. Does it require a three-quarter vote?
Not the motion to reconsider.
Not the motion to reconsider, okay.
You just take a roll call to see if we're going to reconsider?
Let me...
Well...
Okay.
Why don't we vote on the motion reconsider? Because if we don't pass that, we don't...
We don't have a conversation.
We don't worry about it.
All right. Uh, clerk, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Now we can make a motion to approve the resolution, then we can have the discussion.
The ordinance, so...
The ordinance.
It would be...
Yeah, I understand a motion.
A motion to approve that ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay. Ordinance 216 dash 65, all right. An ordinance rescinding resolution 2016 dash 54 dash R and approving of the first amended agreement to abrogate permanent easements and temporary easements, grant replacement permanent easement, and agreement to construct asset assessment, no, access drive, purchase and sale agreement with regard to adjoining parcel, and grant of additional parking parcel easement, and cost sharing among the Village of Bartlett Eagle Z Properties LLC and Global Recycling and Repair Corp.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Dany. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Now, I understand that we require three-quarters before of the board...
Six would require six high votes to pass.
This requires six votes?
Three-fourths of the corporate authorities, so it's not just of the trustees. It's three-fourths of seven, the six trustees plus the mayor. So it requires six positive votes to pass that ordinance?
The way.
Now, the mayor can vote, he's part of the corporate authority.
Any other questions?
Well, Mike?
This guy's been changing the rules all night.
It depends on what it is we're voting against.
Let, let me just say that I started, uh, on my way to and from the office, I started, uh, taking a, a cut, um, down Spalding and, and Lambert, and I was really shocked at what I saw. Um, I mean, the pictures don't really do it justice. It was amazing to me. Um, I understand that the, the wrecking yard is, um, in unincorporated Cook County, but they're using the street as part of their business. I mean, they're using the public right-of-way as part of their u, their business. And I understand, you know, enforcement issues, we'll, we're trying to negotiate this deal. But, you know, going forward, whether it's, you know, banning the trucks, or even looking at it from a zoning perspective, they're operating a business on public streets. You'd never let me set up a desk in front of my house in the street. You'd never let me do that. And, and that's what I, that's what I saw. I mean, it was hard to even see where there was a public street. I, it, I mean, it, it sounds like I'm overstating it, but I went through different times, different days, and it was, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, I was just there last week as well.
Yeah.
Well, that's where, even though, Chief, you brought up that this was a difficult situation to have a, you know, to tire in, uh, no parking whatsoever on that street. situation to have a, you know, to tire in no parking whatsoever on that street, it almost seems to me that this would- this would be a case where that would come into play, where we could really- if we policed people there every single day and fined the truckers that are doing this, it seems like they'd get the hint eventually that they wouldn't do this anymore.
Yeah, the tack we took because of this complex issue was to talk to the individual truckers and their firms and tell them that you get a one warning. We haven't had a repeat offender of an individual, but there's so many trucks going in and out of there that that becomes an ongoing dilemma in itself. Eventually, what it's going to take is us going into Global and not talking to anybody, just hitting them with hefty fines, and that day is coming, we're just waiting to see what happens. Quite frankly, if the improvements to the area with the raised medians and the curbs and stuff keeping them off the roads would be helpful, plus the ordinances that we would pass would make zero tolerance very comfortable for everybody, and we can do that sooner than later.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, I think that that's- that would be one of the recourses we would have, is to go in and just-
It's always a recourse. What we look for is voluntary compliance, that's just our culture, but it is always a recourse, and we're very comfortable with that recourse once we've heard from everybody and tried to get a clarification and future expectations. But yeah, that- we could do that tonight.
I think that would certainly make a huge difference as far as keeping trucks off the road and helping us to feel like we're helping the residents that live in that area, and yet helping with the quiet zone as well. I think our police department could do it, and I don't see why we couldn't do the zero tolerance program in that area.
Oh, we look forward to it.
If someone- I'm sorry, are we done?
One thing I wanted to make mention of is that, you know, we have to keep in mind also is that the quiet zone, all the effort and all the, you know, that has gone into the quiet zone, we not only have to be concerned about the residents that are here this evening, but we also have other residents that live in that area that would benefit from the quiet zone, along with the residents that live here. And, you know, I believe that the new design that we have will accommodate that and improve the situation, and if you do the zero tolerance, that would really improve that, and I think this would be a good, good match for the area.
It's absolutely true.
Jim, I have a question for you. Is any of the quiet zone work started yet?
Metro's begun some of their work, but it isn't necessarily connected to our quiet zone unless you approve this.
Okay, so they haven't relocated the entrance, we haven't done anything with the parking lot, so we're not going to see change very rapidly. It's going to be a work-in-process before we can actually start doing enforcement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Metro, on a totally separate project, Metro is scheduled to start- they have to repair their crossing, they're actually starting tomorrow, they're going to have that crossing closed for 10 days. It's not relation to the quiet zone, we were trying to coordinate it because it would have helped us with our construction, but they're moving forward with their project because they have safety concerns on their track and they need to replace the crossing, so they're starting that work tomorrow. With that, Global will not be able to access from the west on Spalding, so we have directed them to take Spalding from the east from Naperville Road. So we are going to have trucks using that for the next 10 days because they have to be able to get to their facility, we need to accommodate them since the tracks will- they're going to be gone, so there will be no traffic crossing that.
Hopefully, they won't park on the road because they'll be blocking each other. Okay.
Chief, what is- go ahead. Chief, what are your thoughts about a stop sign on Thornberry?
I'm sorry, trustee, what was the intersection?
What- Thornberry? Thornberry.
Lambert.
Yeah, Thornberry and Lambert. So north of the aerial that's on the modern-
Yeah, we could research that. Stop signs as far as traffic calming, not always a good idea, much like speed bumps because they're going to make up the time after the stop, but we could research that for you.
I'd appreciate it.
Uh-huh.
Is there a bike path on the west side of Lambert?
Yes.
So, and there's a- and there's a park up the street.
Yeah, the dog park is up here, bike path right through- right through there.
I just want to add one thing, can you turn to the slide that shows the turning radius of the trucks, not the automated one, but the other one? That one. You can see the truck coming in, but the truck that's trying to exit the parking lot has to go into oncoming traffic to come out. When would that be allowed? Would that be allowed if it was on Route 59 to go into oncoming traffic and then get back onto the side of the road? I just don't understand, because this is a side road, that's okay? That's where all the cars are parking?
Then we'll get too technical, but the comments are already over.
Okay, but that wasn't pointed out, and I just want to make sure it's clearly seen because it's not quite that clear.
Thank you.
How long has that business been there?
I'm going to say, well, there's been trucking businesses there for years.
Okay, so it's not- it's not- this isn't something that Cook County passed a conditional use?
No, this used to be Norgard Trucking, and before that, it was- it's like a trucking and there was a truck repair business going there. This gentleman has probably been there for five years, I'm guessing.
But the use has always been substantially similar?
It's always been heavy kind of commercial type use. It's not been global towing, but it's been a trucking business.
Chief, chief, what I'm hearing a lot of is the fact that this is going to be a real safety issue, what is your opinion?
I agree.
With the trucks?
Well, especially the way the environment is now with what I call sloshy curbs and room the park on sides of roadways, and it's just kind- it would be nice to have curb cuts, raised curbs, it would be nice to have the center median to help facilitate the safety of the area, and then once decisions are made, you know, we work with everybody, we work with the community, we work with business communities, we work with advocates from all sides, and yeah, once- once decisions are made, our job becomes easy. This has been kind of an interesting few months.
Yeah, I mean, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the safety becomes a much less of an item of concern for you once some of these changes are made and you've got your marching orders as far as what's allowed and what's not allowed.
I couldn't say it better.
Okay.
Hasn't it been enforced before on Lambert?
Well, we've been very lockdownish on this neighborhood, we've been very protective of this neighborhood, it was my meetings with the neighborhood that originally got this as a no-truck area at all. It used to use all Spalding and all Lambert all the time, we've locked those down, and we did a lot of work and a lot of research, and we've done a lot of enforcement on that. This particular issue, because of the change in this business, has made it a challenge for everybody, and you also have on the table a lot of resources to improve the quality of life as far as noise going on simultaneously. So, yeah, once it's settled and the board decides what it wants to do, my job gets easy.
So have you sighted quite a bit of trucks on Lambert?
Over the years since we've locked that down, the answer is yes, and we still remain to do that. You need to understand that there are trucks that are legally on Lambert, doing business in the neighborhood. As far as cut-throughs, we do write citations on that, we do put surveillance out there, we do monitor. It's like saying, there's a speeding auto on my street, I won't argue that, that's probably- and we're not always there, I can't afford to give an officer to this neighborhood exclusively and park it there for 24/7. So when the traffic unit or the patrolman who has a little extra time is doing an extra patrol there, is there a truck that goes by? That- I won't deny that that's a possibility. I can tell you it remains a priority to keep trucks off that area. However, there are trucks on there, a lot of landscaping trucks and garbage trucks, and, you know, that's the main artery for that whole neighborhood. As far as using the business, we've locked that down pretty good, and when we find it, we cite.
I think noise mitigation is- it's important, but safety, I think, trumps that, and I think trucks going in and out of this entrance with a bike path and a park right up the street is just a disaster waiting to happen, and I can't vote yes on this.
Chief, let me ask you a question on the exact same topic. Will it be safer once all the improvements are done and it gets policed, or just leaving it the way it is now? Which way is the safer option?
Well, I think it's pretty easy to project that once the environment is changed and improved upon and gloves come off and we lock this down for you, it'll be much safer.
Much safer.
How many trucks are going over that bike path right now? Over the bike path? None.
Yeah.
No trucks at this time because that driveway is off the bike path location to the west. Once that's eliminated, then obviously there are going to be the trucks going over it.
So currently, the trucks are not going over the bike path, but we're going to approve, if it does pass, trucks will go over the bike path. Okay. I just want to be clear.
Add- just to add to that, we have bike paths all over the place with commercial driveways going through it, so- and trucks using it, so I mean, that's something that is pretty common. Brewster Creek, I believe, has a bike path going through it, which is an industrial park that has trucks, so it happens, it can be safe, it's a responsibility of a truck driver to pay attention, it's a responsibility of bicyclists or joggers to also pay attention. It's there, but I don't know how much of a conflict that'll be.
I think it's important to point-
I agree, ma'am.
I think it's important to point out the fact that this is not a good situation right now. This whole area out there is not a good situation, I think everybody would agree with that. We've seen it, it's bad. So the way that I would look at this is, are we progressively making steps to improve the area? And that's really the just of the vote, and if the chief says it's going to be safer with changes, I trust the chief knows what he's talking about. So that's my opinion.
Chief, one last question about parking on Ivory. Somebody was, I think she's gone, was complaining about parking on Ivory and parking overnight.
Yeah, that we can handle right-
It's something we can do, resident-only parking, I- it was probably bad.
No, I don't need a sign to do that, yeah, I'll go out there, we'll go out there and handle that right away, that's intolerable.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Any other discussion? Question? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes. Motion carries. Motion carries. On that note, I would like to thank you guys for voicing your opinion, it's not- it's not heard, there are things that are going to hopefully change the situation out there for the better, it is not a good situation now, so. Next?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. Next item we have on the agenda this evening is new business, any new business for the queue of the order? Hearing none, we'll move on to questions, any questions anyone would have?
Well, I do- I do have, it's not really a question, but I'd like to pay a compliment to both community development and the police department. I got marching orders from my boss to replace our driveway, and so we went through the permit review process and parking the car on the street overnight, and, you know, everybody from the permit techs to the lady of the police department, who's just the sweetest lady, her father was in concrete, he gave me some tips, but everybody was really polite, it was nice to call the village, get a human being, and, you know, I understand people get frustrated, but it was very good, so thank you, and, you know, I know a lot of our residents get that- get that service.
You know, that's one thing that you just made a point of that struck a chord with me, is when you call, I- in the business that I have, I call a number of municipalities, and it's always some voicemail, or it's always some recording or push a button or something like that, and I have to compliment you because of the fact that no matter when you call this village, somebody picks up the phone and says, "Good morning," or "Good afternoon, Village Bartlett, how may I help you?" And you're absolutely correct, yeah. Good job.
All right, anything else? We will be moving direct- we will be taking a short recess in between the meeting and the committee of the whole, and then directly following the committee of the whole meeting, we will be adjourning into an executive session to discuss pending or enamente litigation pursuant to Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Carbonero, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?